I will call the meeting of the Bourne Select Board Order on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. Sorry. This is Zoom recording?
No, it's not. I just needed to turn the, turn it on.
Use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505. The password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We begin with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel. And I would also like to include Blanche Cody this evening, who passed away on Christmas Eve for her years of service on the Bourne Historical Society. Salute to the flag.
Pleasure, ladies.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, a report out on the executive session. The board took two votes. We authorized the town administrator to execute a settlement agreement with DEP on some concerns they had about how we were handling the contamination here, but we were all good with that. And also, we approved the minutes of December 17th, 2024. Reading of the Select Board mission and mission statements?
Sure. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces extra education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
On the mission?
Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. And I will note that Peter Meyer, Mary Jane Mistrangelo, and Anne Marie Saronian are here at the meeting, and Gina Zarevitz and Melissa Ferretti are attending the meeting via Zoom. Community shout out and recognition? Anyone have anything this evening?
I want to thank Amy Kular and the Bourne Town Quick staff for last, and the towns, other staff for last evening. Things were different, but we got the job done. And I want to thank everybody who made this happen. And thank you for the residents that came out last night. It was important to get this done.
I have a shout out for the Friends of the Jonathan Bourne Public Library, who had a book drive to support the Mass Maritime Cadets in developing a library on their new training ship before they set out on their sea term.
Excellent. Public comment on non-agenda items? Is anyone here for public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none. Moving right along. The next item on the, on the agenda is Chapter 40B, Local Incentive Program, LIP, training with Judy Barrett of Barrett Consulting Group. Does anyone else have to call a meeting to order? Does anyone else have a quorum?
I don't think we're going to be voting on anything.
Just, okay.
Okay.
All right then. I will turn the meeting over to Judy Barrett then.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. My, my name is Judy Barrett, and I'm here acting in the capacity of the Regional Housing Services Program that is being operated by Barnstable County. We were asked to come and do a little kind of overview for all of you on Chapter 40B, and in particular, the local initiative program, which is a program component that has been in place for about 30 years. And it is available to communities that want to use that way to create Chapter 40B affordable housing. So I'm going to talk a little bit about sort of Chapter 40B overview, because I don't know whose experience has been what in this room with 40B. And then I'm going to launch into kind of the mechanics of a conventional comprehensive permit, so-called, versus local initiative program, so you can think about what makes the most sense for your community. Can I just get a sense, before we start, of what boards or commissions are in the room in addition to the select board?
Yeah. Why don't we do, why don't we kind of go around and introduce ourselves?
That'd be fine if you wanted to.
Yeah. You want to start, Liz, then we'll kind of go through the select board and then around.
I'm Liz Hartsgrave. I'm the Assistant Town Administrator.
Marlene McCollum, Town Administrator.
Peter Myers, Select Board.
Mary Jane Mistrangelo, Select Board.
Anne Marie Saronian, Select Board.
Judy Barrett.
Rob Frankjerr, One of the Housing Partnership.
Sue Ross, Housing Card Trust.
Sean Moos, Susan Town Planner.
Jen Copeland, Town Planner.
Chris Farrell, Planning Board.
Going to go into the back room there, John?
Steve Emilia, the Cape Cod Commission, Bourne Representative.
Josh Duggan, Resident.
John Duggan, Planning Board.
Jim Robinson, Planning Board.
Great. So beautiful. Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to introduce themselves? You can unmute yourself and?
I am Kathy Fox, Alphano Housing, Bourne Housing Trust.
Melissa Ferretti, County Board Select Board.
Gina Zarevitz, Select Board.
Kim Donio, Honorable Housing Committee.
James Spire, Chairman of the Zoning Appeals Board.
Tim Murphy, Building Commission Lieutenant, Bourne.
Super. This is great. Thank you. Because a lot of what I'm going to talk about is the way that the boards can kind of work together, regardless of what pathway a comprehensive permit takes. Just, there's this point when everybody kind of needs to be helping each other through the process. So without, this is not happy. I wonder if it's because it's not on. Yeah, it's not working. Sorry, guys.
That's okay. Yeah, try to advance it. It's, sometimes it falls asleep.
I should have tested this before.
Can you try with the click? Okay, you're good now.
Excellent. Thank you. So I wanted, like I said, I'm going to do a little bit of an overview of Chapter 40B, and then contrast these kind of two ways to do a 40B. Make sure everybody understands kind of where the responsibilities lie between state government and the local officials and staff, kind of what the state expects, what I think communities probably expect. And then specifically with regard to the local initiative program, talk a bit about the unique role that the select board has in that process, and then how not unique the ZBA's role is, because once the project is in front of the Board of Appeals, its process is governed by statute. So the LIP program is really probably most important to communities before the project goes to the ZBA and after the comprehensive permit's been granted. But once it's with the ZBA, that jurisdiction and all the authority that goes with it does not change. So Chapter 40B, most people think Chapter 40B is, is just about affordable housing, but the reality is it's the regional planning law. And four sections that exist in that regional planning law address affordable housing. And the point of the law is to make sure that every community in the Commonwealth is sort of carrying its, what we call, regional fair share of housing. And so when you hear about like 10% standard, really what that is about is if you're at or over 10% of your affordable housing stock, then you're considered to have met regional fair share. You have your regional, you have your fair share of the region's need. It's not a cap on affordable housing. It's really a minimum. So you'll often hear about communities granting comprehensive permits when they're over 10%. But 10% is really, it's a very important threshold for determining kind of how much authority the ZBA has versus the developer in this, in this process that really requires local officials to balance need with local concerns. So in, in about 2000, some of you may be old enough, as I am, to remember that we had a pretty deep recession between 1989 and 1991. You do. And so much of the 1990s, not much housing was getting built. And then all of a sudden, toward the end of the 1990s, the lid was blown off the housing market in New England, and all kinds of developments started. So communities were seeing an uptick in comprehensive permits, and people said, wait a minute, you know, we need some relief here. So state government stepped in through regulation, not through changes in the statute, and said, all right, we're going to come up with some tools to help you guys work toward the 10% minimum in a way that might be a little bit less, perceived to be a little bit less painful at the local level. So out of the regulations that were adopted in 2001, we got the Housing Production Plan, and I know you have one. Many communities do. That, that opportunity just simply didn't exist before 20, 2001. There were some other tools that were adopted in regulations to say, look, if you've recently granted a large comprehensive permit, you can take a break for a year. A housing production plan kind of accomplishes the same thing. But even before we got to these, these regulatory tools that I think many of you may be familiar with, in the 1980s, there was also an uptick in housing before the recession. And the legislature established a special commission to say, how can we make 40B work better? And one of the things that came out of that was this concept of the local initiative program, which essentially says, a developer can come to your community and say, I want to build an affordable housing development, but I don't really need a cash subsidy. I don't need financial support. I can make that project work with what's called an internal subsidy. So if, if 75% of my units are market rate, I can make 25% of them affordable. I don't need a subsidy, but I need a way to get in front of the Board of Appeals. So out of that process came the local initiative program. So that actually has been around for a long time, but it is a program. It's not part of the statute. And you're going to hear me talk about this from time to time as we go on tonight, because you need to kind of put into buckets. There's a statute, there's state regulations, and there are programs. And the authority that comes with them differs. So the local initiative program, as I said, came out of the special commission's work in the late 1980s. It was intended to give communities a way to partner with developers. There is no financial subsidy involved in these projects, although sometimes a developer who is working under a town's zoning will say, I can give you some affordable units, but I need some assistance. And so the Housing Trust or the Community Preservation Committee might say, well, we can provide some support. That's not a state subsidy. The developer still needs a way to do the project, so a local initiative program, comprehensive permit, may in fact be the vehicle for doing that. But it is still a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B, and it's just very important to understand that, because sometimes I think people imagine that LIP is somehow different. In terms of the Board of Appeals and the basic structure and decision-making process, it's the same. So it has some advantages. It has some drawbacks. There are some caveats with LIP that I think you probably all want to think about. It's sometimes thought of as the friendly 40B, because developer comes to the select board and the planning board and the housing partnership and so forth, and says, let's try to work something out. So it tends to be an amicable process. It doesn't necessarily stay amicable when it gets in front of the Board of Appeals, and I think it's just important to understand that. And that's not to dismiss the importance of LIP. It's just to point out that, you know, when it gets to the Board of Appeals, sometimes things change. So no one gets in front of a, of a ZBA for a comprehensive permit without going through a process called project eligibility. In the old days, we called it site approval, but it's the same thing. And, and essentially what it is, is a way for the state, this is a programmatic way for the state to guarantee that a developer who's appearing before the Board of Appeals satisfies a fundamental requirement of the statute, which is that a project in front of a Board of Appeals must be approved by a state or federal housing subsidy program. So you have to go through project eligibility, whether it's a LIP or, or so-called conventional permit. And you must be scratching your head by now, saying, well, you just said they didn't need a subsidy for a LIP. And, and so the concept is, the state assisting a developer going through the project eligibility process is considered a subsidy. It's a technical assistance subsidy. In any case, whether it's a LIP or conventional permit, they have to go through project eligibility. The way it typically works is the developer has probably told your town they're coming forward, but even if they haven't, the state agency that is approached for a site approval letter must notify the local officials, and that comes to the select board. And the town is given 30 days to comment. There is a kind of a review process. The subsidizing agency requests an appraisal on the property so that they can establish kind of what the as-of-right value is of the, of the land. There are certain standards of review that the subsidizing agency must consider in order to grant that site approval letter. I think it's important to understand, because sometimes people who hear about comprehensive permit developments say, well, how did that ever get through the site approval process? We don't think it's a good project. Why didn't they stop it? Subsidizing agencies are not permitting authorities. They don't permit projects. They're simply going through a litmus test of, if the, if the local officials approved this project, would we fund it? That's really the perspective of a subsidizing agency. So they're looking for, you know, does this project make sense from our programmatic point of view? If we're mass housing and we're funding projects and you're coming to us for site approval, we're going to want to make sure that that's a project we would actually fund. So they're not doing permitting. They're not closing the door on a project coming to you, but they are making a determination, would we go forward with this project if the local official said yes? It opens a door for a developer to come to the Board of Appeals. That's what site approval does. The subsidizing agency, whether it's mass housing, these are the subsidizing agencies up here that you're typically going to hear about. Mass housing is the most common, but Mass Housing Partnership also acts as a subsidizing agency. They have programs to fund affordable housing. Mass Government, Mass, Massachusetts State Government, through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, has certain subsidy programs for housing, and Mass Development also is a subsidizing agency. So the normal route to a comprehensive permit is a developer goes to one of those organizations, applies for site approval, you get notified, the agency comes out and does a site visit. You have an opportunity to provide comments. You provide comments. The agency considers them, and by and large, the developer's going to get that site approval letter. Sometimes the project will change a little bit before the site approval's granted, based on the local concerns, based on concerns a subsidizing agency has. But generally speaking, they will eventually grant a site approval letter. And the questions they have to answer are, is this project eligible under our subsidy guidelines? As I said, they're making a decision, would we fund this project if the Board of Appeals said yes? Is this site generally appropriate for residential development? And you might say, why have I got a comprehensive permit in front of us on industrial land? Because the statute says, land that is zoned for residential, commercial, or industrial development is eligible for a comprehensive permit. So as I said, they're not doing permitting. They're not doing zoning. They're guided by the statute. Is the conceptual design for this project generally appropriate? Is this project seem feasible? They're not running through an elaborate financial analysis at this point, but it is sort of a litmus test of, does this developer's pro forma make sense? Does the land valuation, is it, is it right? Is it fair? Is this project going to be able to live with profit limitations that apply to our program? Is this applicant even eligible to be here? Under the statute, a public agency, a nonprofit organization, or a for-profit developer who agrees to limit a dividend organization, those are eligible applicants. So subsidizing agency has to answer that question as well. And then does the applicant have site control, which is generally a purchase and sale agreement? If the subsidizing agency can answer all of those questions, yes, the applicant's going to get a project eligibility letter and eventually be in front of the Board of Appeals. The, I want to make sure I don't forget these things. During that comment period, the 30-day comment period that you have, one of the things you're, you're going to want to make sure of is that the select board lets everybody know, so that you can get comments from your planning board, your conservation commission. The Board of Appeals should not be involved at this point, because they're eventually going to have to hear the case. But any of the boards that normally would review, you know, Cape Cod Commission, you may want to ask them for, for comment. Your Conservation Commission, your Board of Health, anybody who would normally review one of these projects should be asked for input. Ultimately, it should all be compiled in one letter. It goes from the select board to the subsidizing agency. And I would just encourage you to focus on things that are valid local concerns, which is not things such as a market study. Board of Appeals doesn't look at that. It's not fiscal impact analysis. Those are not things that are considered under the statute valid local concerns. So it's helpful to the town to set the tone upfront. Here are things we can consider. Here are things we can't. Let's focus on the things that we can. You send a comment letter to the subsidizing agency, and as I said, it may result in some changes, but generally, that project eligibility letter will be approved. How does this differ with LIP? With LIP, the developer is going to approach your town, or you might approach a developer. I've seen this happen both ways. But the conversation is about, do we want to be partners in this? Maybe the developer doesn't need a subsidy, but wants to do a project. It's a project that may be consistent with your local comprehensive plan. It may be substantially consistent with the housing needs addressed in your housing production plan. It looks pretty good. There are opportunities to talk to the developer about things that you may want to see the project accomplish for your community, kind of above and beyond affordable housing. You have to be a little bit careful with this. This is not an opportunity for a grab bag. It's really a way to sort of say, you know, are there things this project perhaps could do for our community in addition to the public benefit of affordable housing? I've seen sometimes, communities might ask for a modest contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for example, or something, something along those lines, or to provide some additional affordable units. The other thing that you're going to want to make sure you talk to the developer about upfront is, who's going to monitor compliance with the Affordable Housing deed restriction? Because if the developer went to any of those other subsidizing agencies I mentioned for a conventional site approval, the subsidizing agency would handle the monitoring. But when it's a LIP, the state expects that you're going to monitor. So that's a responsibility you're going to want to think about, and you're going to want to talk to the developer about and make sure it's covered, because there's nothing worse than a restriction that's not monitored. You're going to want to consult with your town council. I'm a planner. I'm not an attorney. I'll just be very straight about this. If you're going to negotiate anything with the applicant before you sign off on the application for, for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, just make sure your town council is kind of in the loop on this. You may be asked, as I said, to provide some funding. That is not normal, but it sometimes happens. Reasonable agreements between the town and the developer will probably be honored by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They don't want to get in the way of a project that's been negotiated at the local level, but there are certain red flags that you should be aware of that will cause a problem with EO HLC, such as notably fair housing issues. So, you know, you want to sort of stay in your lane, if you will, and keep in mind, at the project eligibility stage, the project's not being permitted. The select board is not permitting the project. The planning board is not permitting the project. The ZBA is going to permit the project at the appropriate time. You really want to sort of satisfy yourselves that that project is kind of what you want, and that, that you want to encourage it, that it's, as I said, consistent with your housing production plan or your local comprehensive plan, or any other kind of planning document that's guiding decisions in your community. So just to summarize here, conventional comp permit, developer goes directly to the subsidizing agency. They run a process that's pretty much independent of you, although you have a role in providing comments. Through LIP, the process starts here, and the developer cannot go for a site approval letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities unless the chief elected official provides a letter of support. You can close the door on that if you wish. The downside is you may be encouraging the developer to go for a regular conventional comprehensive permit, but, you know, I've seen those work just fine, too. So there's, there's just no other change, though, in how this works once that developer has a site approval letter. There is absolutely no difference in the permitting process. One thing that I think-
Before we move on, can I ask a question here?
Sure, of course. Sorry.
Because you said, in this, in the conventional process, and really in the LIP process, but you said the conventional process, the comment period, what kind of comments are appropriate? I mean, what, you said what's not appropriate is certain things that are the permitting things, but what is, okay. If you're going to answer later, you don't have to answer now.
Well, it's, there are things that the statute recognizes as local concerns. Environmental protection, open space, design, you know, building design, site design. I mean, there have concerns like those that undeniably are the factors the ZBA is eventually going to consider, but if you see particular issues that you think the subsidizing agency could probably help you address before it ends up in front of the ZBA, I think those are perfectly valid things to, to bring up. I think that's, that makes sense. And certainly, I've, many towns will say, that's not consistent with our comprehensive plan or our master plan, that, because that's not uncommon. It's very common, if a comprehensive permit's proposed on industrial land, a community will say, well, that's industrial property. We're not, we're not, we don't even plan for that for residential. As I said, the statute recognizes industrial land as suitable for residential. So, you just have to understand, the whole point of this law is to get affordable housing built. And I'm not going to get preachy about this. I'm just going to tell you, that's the point of the law. So think about that. And if you're going to partner with a developer, you're partnering with them to enable an affordable housing development to go forward. I think that's really the spirit that you want to sort of keep in mind. For whatever it's worth, I think Brewster has a very nice approach to handling requests for LIPS, and I'd be happy to share, or if they can, share for LIPS, and I'd be happy to share, or if they can, share with you their process. But essentially, it all is handled by the housing partnership, because the whole focus in that community is, we want to get housing built, LIP is a way to do that, let's make sure the public understands what's going on, because the select board, once they sign off on this, there are going to be some probably upset residents and probably some happy ones, so let's not hide anything. But yes, we want to go forward with housing. So, one thing I will say, I think the developers sometimes prefer LIP because the site approval process tends to go faster. With the mass housing, the conventional process, it just takes more time. To Executive Office and Housing and Livable Communities, if the select board has signed off on the project, the assumption is that the community's in support of it, and they don't want to get in the way. So, sometimes, it just works a little faster. So, the comp- permit process itself, the conventional process, the zoning Board of Appeals, as you probably all know, but I have to say this anyway, the ZBA has jurisdiction over all local regulations. So, the whole point of the comprehensive permit is a unified permit that subsumes zoning, subdivision control, local wetlands, local Board of Health, local historic district, local regulations are subsumed in that permit. And so, if you're a ZBA member, and your typical duty is to look at requests to put a deck on a non-conforming house, because all the other plan review is being done by the planning board, and all of a sudden, you've got this plan put in front of you for a complicated project, this can get a little bit daunting. And it's why I think it's so important for the select board, the planning board, everybody to kind of recognize, you have a board that's got a difficult job to do, and they're going to need help. So, be thinking about how you can be helpful advisors to the ZBA as they go through that process. The law assumes that if a developer is going through this process, that your local regulations probably don't enable the development of affordable housing. Therefore, the developer can request waivers of any of those local rules, and it's really up to the ZBA to decide whether to grant them. None of this is any different with a LIP. Once that developer has the project eligibility letter and goes to the ZBA, all of this is the same. So, the ZBA still has to decide, are we going to grant these waivers? They still have to hear the public, they still have to consider the project, they still typically will retain consultants from outside to advise them on traffic and so forth, and communities handle this in different ways, but they need help. And sometimes, the building inspector is going to be dealing with projects that are very different from what typically comes through the building department. So, they may need help. So, I think the culture of, how do we get through this process, which could bring about some significant benefits in the community, but may not make everybody happy, how do we do this in a way that comes out with the best possible outcome for the town? There are things that are not in the ZBA's purview. So, impact on schools and town services, I already said this, tenant selection, home buyer selection, not in the ZBA's bailiwick. Profit monitoring is not in the ZBA's jurisdiction. Market study, these are things that, you know, don't go there. Focus on the physical development of the project. If you do that, you're going to get through this as painlessly as possible. Oh, my goodness. I know what that says, I should have turned away. So, there are like, these critical things that the statute says, that actually, the site approval process is designed to cover. And one is, is the applicant actually eligible to be there? Public agency, the nonprofit organization, the limited dividend organization. You know, do they have site control? And is there, you know, is the project something that that program would fund, or that they would subsidize? Those are like, three sort of critical things that the subsidizing agency has to decide. Well, frankly, according to the statute, those are the ZBA's responsibilities. The point of site approval is to take care of that ahead of time. And sometimes, ZBA's will say, they'll contest the issue of, does this applicant actually have site approval? A PNS will start to expire, you know, in the middle of the permit process. But the assumption is that having gone through site approval and gotten that project eligibility letter, that the developer has met the basic threshold requirements of the law, and therefore has a right to be in front of the ZBA. That is no different with LIP than it is with a conventional permit. The application requirements for a comprehensive permit sometimes feel a little bit muddy to people. If it's a site plan, it goes to the planning board, there's a level of detail you're expecting that's not required for a comprehensive permit. It is a preliminary plan. Essentially, the developer has a duty to show that they can build the project that they're proposing, and that, and they're going to show you how they're going to be able to do that. But they don't have to give you the level of detail that is required for a subdivision or something of that nature. They have to kind of show you, where's the project, what are we, kind of elevation drawings for the buildings, what are these buildings going to look like? How much of the site is going to be covered? How intense is the use going to be? How are we going to get utilities into the site? And what are the waivers that we're requesting? Those are the basic pieces of an application, whether it's a LIP or a comprehensive, or a conventional comprehensive permit. I know you can't read this, but I put this up here in these slides all the time. Anyway, there is a page in the ZBA handbook that goes through these deadlines, that they are critical to understand. I don't care if a developer walks in this building with a comprehensive permit application on December 24th. You open that hearing in 30 days. Just never, ever, ever, avoid opening the hearing. Just get it open, even if you're not ready to really go forward, post the hearing, open it, you can always continue it. But there are certain statutory requirements that are sacred, and the Housing Appeals Committee and the courts cannot waive them. There are other things that are programmatic that can be waived, but the statute says, thou shalt open this hearing in 30 days, and thou shalt make a decision within 40 days of closing a hearing, and thou shalt file that decision with the town clerk within 14 days. Those are statutory. All these other dates up here are a function of regulation and policy. The law, the state wants towns to sort of tell developers ahead of time. If the Board of Appeals thinks they can turn a project down because the town doesn't have to grant it, I got a housing production plan that's certified, I'm over 10 percent, there has to be a process to notify the developer, I, Board of Appeals, think I can do this. And then, there's a whole appeal process that kicks in, that may actually, as I stand here speaking, be amended out of the state regulations in a matter of weeks, but right now, it's still in place. 180 days to conclude the hearing process for the ZBA. These are all like, a function of regulation, but the statutes, 30, 40, and 14 days are absolutely sacred. The public hearing process for the ZBA, it's really, these are common sense rules for any board that does permitting. You have to have a fair process, it has to be evidence-based, the decision has to be defensible. You have to sort of conduct the hearing process the same way you would for any other development. You can't really treat them any differently from any type of development. Town departments and boards have a technical role that's critically important for the Board of Appeals. I've seen planning boards and conservation commissions play an invaluable role to help a ZBA identify things that could be waived without significant injury to a public interest, and things that really should not be waived, and helping the board kind of make those distinctions. It's a very important and valuable role of planning boards, Boards of Health, and conservation commissions. Police Department, Fire Department, they should review the plan for public safety purposes. This is all stuff you guys know. Think about it, the way you might approach a site plan or a special permit, the involvement of these other people is the same. The difference is the level of detail that you can expect from the developer at this, in this permitting process. And I would just say, I'm sure you would do this anyway, but the ZBA should have access to outside consultants. One of the reasons for doing that, even though you probably have the best staff in the world in this town, is that if a project goes to appeal before the Housing Appeals Committee, greater credibility is going to be placed on an outside consultant than on your own town staff. It's just the nature of the beast. So, but the developer has to pay for those services, so don't be afraid to say, we need, you know, we need peer review consultants. None of this is any different if it's a LIP. It's absolutely the same. Focus on-
Can I just ask a question about that?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, the peer review consultant, at the preliminary design stage, so, how do we work through, how do we work through something like drainage? So, what level of design plans do they need to give us with drainage reports? And how can we have that peer reviewed at a preliminary level?
It's a great question, and I'm glad I'm not an engineer, because I'm not going to tell you what percentage of design it needs to be. That's what the peer review consultant does. I mean, the people who do this, day in and day out, will essentially say, I need to see sufficient evidence that if you take this to final design, you will be able to comply with the state stormwater handbook. I can already see a problem. What the peer review consultants are best for, aside from that kind of discussion, or helping the Board of Appeals, you know, ask questions, is to give you conditions of approval that you could write into the decision to say, you're not going to be able to go to the building department, get your permit, until you submit the following stuff. So, it's a way of filling in the blank, if you will, between, this is what you've got, the peer review consultant will probably say, we need to see some additional information, the applicant's going to submit it, because they want to get a yes. And at that point, the peer review consultant says, okay, I can see now that this project's feasible, I can see that it can be done in compliance with state law. Before you get a building permit, these are the additional things you have to submit, and that gets written into the comprehensive permit. That's the best answer I can give you. I mean, sometimes, the plans come in and they're just so well-done, and it makes the review process go much smoother, and other times, not so. So, you know, the-
Catherine?
You have a question, Catherine?
I do, I'm sorry.
You have to come up to the microphone? Sorry.
Hi, I'm Catherine, welcome. My question was, do towns use any automated systems? Is there a standard for this? And do consulting companies, when they're monitoring and implementing it, like, the workflow, or sort of, is it a manual process? Or, you know, when you're helping towns stay accountable, right? So, how do we do that? Is that a manual process? Do we're consultant, do we're peer consul-
Accountable in what way?
I guess we're staying accountable to meet the deadlines needed for the requirements of check to be made.
Okay, so, it varies a little bit-
And excuse me, I'm new to this, so, thank you.
No, it's fine, no, it's totally fine. I mean, just full confession, I do a lot of work with ZBA's as a Mass Housing Partnership consultant, so, I can just tell you, a lot of times, there's a consultant there. But even when there isn't, some towns want their town council there. And I just sat through the hearing process maybe six months ago with a ZBA in Central Mass that had their town council at every hearing. And in that project, the town council needed to be there. They don't always need that. In that case, they did. But usually, somebody will just start the clock, you know, the town planner will probably be the first one to say, that hearing opened on X date, 180 days from X is now. So, it's really, that's why I'm saying, whether it's a consultant, or town council, or your staff, people need to help the ZBA.
Right.
Best answer I can give you. Yeah.
Under the planning board, you know, your definitive plan of record for a subdivision, you can ask for a performance bond?
Yeah.
For the project. But under ZBA, is your, can we ask for the same provision, or is that a common waiver? Because some of these projects go belly up halfway through, and all of a sudden, you're left with an eyesore. And I want to make sure that, if any, if we approve these comprehensive permits, these local LIPS, that we have a performance bond or the protection in place to make sure it has enough money in place to finish these projects.
Yeah. Typically, the peer review, the peer review engineer, or your town engineer, depending upon the community, will recommend a condition of approval that says, surety of a certain amount of a certain type needs to be posted prior to. So, the permit's organized by, before you put a shovel in the ground, certain things have to happen. Before you get a building permit, certain things need to happen. Before you got a C, Certificate of Occupancy, certain things need to happen. That all gets written into the permit, and surety is typically one of them.
I just didn't know if it would be, make it uneconomic if you end up requiring it? I didn't know if it would end up making the property uneconomic.
If it's reasonable request, you know, the developer is expected to know what they're doing, and they should be planning as part of their project pro forma, that they need to have certain things in place, and surety's a common one. So, I've always seen that written into permits, if it's any help.
Thank you.
No problem. So, anybody else have a question? Before I keep going. One thing that often happens during the permit process, where again, I think the select board or staff or somebody could be very helpful to the ZBA, is this concept of a work session. The public hearing of the ZBA always has to be public, always has to be an open public session, always has to be available to the community. Sometimes, there's just little stuff that needs to get hammered out, that really, it's just not necessary in a public hearing, but you need the peer review consultant, you need the developer's consultants, you need everybody around the table to kind of work certain things out. And if that, if it seems like that's an appropriate thing to do during the permitting process, making sure your town administrator or your staff, somebody is there, because the Board of Appeals probably doesn't want to be in the room, but to help move communication along, and then to be able to go to the next public hearing session and say, we had a work session, it was on such and such a date, this is what we did. These are our recommendations to the ZBA as a result of that process. The ZBA is still in the driver's seat, but there's just lots of ways that I think you can think about being helpful, making this process go forward as effectively as it can. And the other thing I would say is, because I've just seen this over and over again, people want to know, the general public wants to know, where does this project stand? What have you got? I want to see things before the hearing. Make good use of your website, and just get everything posted, because your staff in the ZBA office or building department doesn't want to have to constantly be feeling these requests, so.
I can't see you back there, Catherine. You're behind the podium, so I-
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
I totally can't see you.
No, that's okay, you actually answered.
You have to come closer to the microphone, because they can't hear you on Bourne Community TV if you don't.
Sure, okay. Sorry.
Hi. Thank you.
Pardon?
You don't have to swallow it.
So, one of my questions was, and I think you just answered it, and I've lost my train of thought, the biggest challenges for towns trying to implement this. So, I was going to ask you what the biggest one was. You actually just said it about updating your website, right? So, what are some of the others that the challenges that towns face, that they either need to think about hiring staff, or they need additional boards, or to hire consultants for? Top three, maybe?
You have the people you need, I think. I mean, you have a planning board, you have a conservation commission, you have a Board of Health. Your town has both, I think, a housing partnership and a housing trust, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's magic to me. I don't see that all the time. You have the people here who can help make this successful. So, I don't think that's a concern. I just don't. I think the issue is really these technical things, these like stormwater standards, and, you know, the size of a water line, and things like that engineers do. That's the stuff that really can make a project go south, or be a really good development. I think those are the things where you need help. And so, sometimes, a town has a fully-staffed town engineering department, and they handle that stuff. Sometimes, they don't, thank you very much, and they get a peer review consultant instead. And sometimes, they have a town engineer, and they hire a peer review consultant, anyway. But a lot of it is just, it's the technical readiness for a project to take a comprehensive permit, now go through the next level of investment to do the real construction plans, and be able to go to the board, to the building department, and say, I'm ready to construct this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Sue. Go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yep.
So, I have two questions, actually. The first one is, when we were first doing a review, I called Mass Housing Partnership to see if we could get a consultant, and they said no. But they said the zoning Board of Appeals could have an attorney for nothing, you know, for nothing. So, when it was time to go to the ZBA, they could get an attorney.
That's correct. That's what I do, and there's about four of us who do.
Okay. So, when, so they, so the ZBA, whoever you are, remember that, you could get an attorney for nothing.
Yeah.
So, the other question is, who, and at what point, do you look at their pro forma?
Ah, such a good question.
Because that is so, that's something like, we can't get a consultant, but we should have one, and we're supposed to be looking at it.
You're not going to like my answer. In the old days, Boards of Appeals were almost trained to ask upfront, let me see your pro forma.
Right.
And it was useless, frankly, because the pro forma simply says what the developer wants to build. And people get into arguments, silly arguments, month-long arguments, over whether the actual profit from a given pro forma is 15 percent, or is it really 21 percent? And they argue about assumptions, and meanwhile, there's a project in permitting. So- So the rules were changed in 2008 around the, the use of the pro forma in the comprehensive permit process. So now the way it works is if the Board of Appeals asks the developer to make a project change, the applicant, applicants will make the changes they can because they want to get a yes. But if they say, I can't do that, it's just going to make my project uneconomic. At that point, the Board of Appeals can say, you're going to show me that that's the case. So the applicant is now under the gun to submit a pro forma that shows the impact of the board's request. If you make me do these things, it's going to tank my project, and I'm showing you that. And at that point, the board can then get a peer review consultant to review the pro forma and either agree or disagree with the applicant. I'll tell you what the risk is. If the applicant's pro forma is in error, you know, or is inflated, then perhaps a consultant can help to identify that. I can guarantee you it's going to end up in an argument in front of the Housing Appeals Committee. But the, but the other side of it is, what if you hire a consultant who says, you know, the developer's right, can't do this? Now you've just lost your leverage. I think the ability to negotiate with developers needs to get beyond the pro forma.
No, I, I was thinking, well, can they afford it?
I can hear in the audience.
That's not, but that's, but that's up to the subsidizing agency. The subsidizing agency is going to-
Sue, if you're, you need to come up, if you're going to ask questions, you need to come up to the microphone so people can hear.
It's just the questions about the review of the developer's pro forma. And, and all I'm saying is, the subsidizing agency is going to look at that as part of site approval. It's their job to determine, is this project feasible? The Board of Appeals in some ways doesn't have to worry about that, but it does become a worry for them if they're going to ask for changes to the project that the applicant says, I can't do that. That's when it can run afoul. Does that help? May not be the answer you want, but it's, it's the right one, I can tell you that.
I think we should, at this point, go through the rest of your slides and then have questions at the end.
That's fine, okay.
Because I don't want to run out of time.
Okay, that's fine. So you asked me like 10 slides ago, what is it that the Board of Appeals can consider? And I'm now there. The statute says the Board of, the Board of Appeals can consider and impose conditions, if necessary, to protect the following local concerns: public health, public safety, environmental impact, building and site design, open space, to achieve better consistency with planning, or other local concerns that may in some way be related to the physical development of the site. There isn't a lot of guidance in judicial or Housing Appeals Committee decisions around the effectiveness of open space and planning as concerns. There are a few cases on it. But I can tell you that the things that you are in the greatest position to effect and, and perfect with the developer are around the physical and design qualities of the project. Essentially, think about it as what you would look at if it was site plan approval for a permitted use. You can't turn it down. You're reviewing it for design, for public safety, for access, all those things that kind of are common sense to a planning board. It's the same thing. That's the scope. So the more you can keep that in mind going through the process, the more likely it is that you're going to have an outcome that is going to give you a project that, that you're happy with, and that does what it should do, and you avoid litigation, if that's your goal. Board can do three things. None of this is any different with the LIP, by the way. We're still in the public hearing process here. The board can deny the application. It can typically approve with conditions, it's usually the way these turn out. I have seen a few approved, kind of as is, they're very small projects, inconsequential. But of course, the big difference between a denial and approval with conditions is whether the, is the degree to which the project may have been made uneconomic. Denial, of course, is assumed to make it uneconomic, and the entire burden in the, in the appeal process is on you. Whereas if it's, if it's an approval with conditions and the developer doesn't like some of the conditions, in the appeal process, the burden is kind of, it's, it's on both of you. It's on the applicant, it's also on the, on the town. Be aware that if you go through the local initiative program process to achieve site approval, the ZBA may put conditions on this project that were not contemplated when you folks wrote a letter of support to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, because their jurisdiction does not change. And once I actually saw a denied comprehensive permit that came through the LIP process. So, I mean, that can happen as well. You probably know all this, but if there is an unhappy outcome, the applicant can appeal to an entity called the Housing Appeals Committee, which is a state entity that kind of is created to handle developer appeals of comprehensive permits. Anybody else either goes to Superior Court or the Land Court. The same appeal process applies, whether it came to you through the LIP or the conventional comprehensive permit process. None of that changes. So this is just a summary slide, I'm not going to read all this to you, but this is sort of the conventional one. There's a flow chart here. Subsidizing agency comes to the town, select board organizes a comment process, town department gets involved, everybody put their comments together. The ZBA handles the comprehensive permit process. Ideally, everybody's sort of providing comments to help the ZBA, and a permit is either granted or not, but the ZBA prepares a decision, and then a whole other process kicks in after that, that's, that's not part of the town. The, the LIP process is very similar, except I should have flipped select board and subsidizing agency because actually, the, the initial action happens here. But I think the one thing I want to just really reinforce is, if it's going to be a LIP comprehensive permit, you have to anticipate that you're going to need to monitor the affordable housing deed restriction on those units. So you want to think about that upfront as a capacity issue and then how you're going to, to do that. Post comprehensive permit, very simply, a lot of this is not any different. There is a final approval process, which is another, another, say, resist steps the developer has to go through. Now back with the subsidizing agency around having the regulatory agreement in place that's going to control the affordable units. An affirmative fair housing marketing plan has to be done, that's true with a LIP or, or the, or a regular comprehensive permit. But you still have to not only monitor that restriction, but you, your LIP affordable units are still going to have to go through an affirmative fair housing marketing process to make sure that anybody who is eligible has an opportunity to apply. I got through it, my God, I can't believe it. Marlene, I did it in an hour. I was worried about that. But I'm happy to take any questions, you know, that I somehow didn't cover already.
Any questions from the board? Anne Marie? Either Jean or Melissa, do either of you have questions that you?
No, I think it was very informative. I think it's complex and it's a lot of information. So we appreciate you coming and giving it to us, and I think we have a lot to talk about, learn.
So I, I have a question. We have two projects-
I heard.
That are thinking of coming to Bourne for, as 40B, and I think they both are interested in on the LIP process. So are there, when the select board, if they, they want to come and present their project to, to the, to the select board? If the select board is, is reviewing their project, are there any frameworks for what we should be using? I mean, should we? So in the conventional process, when this, in that site approval thing, we have an opportunity for comments where we would go out to the different boards and say, do you have any comments? Send them to us. And then, is it similar? Is it the same? But we really take the initiative on them coming to us, us having, reaching out to Planning Board, Conservation, and saying, do you have any comments on this project? And then the board making a decision about whether or not. Is, is there any guidance for select boards on how to make a decision as to whether or not to support a project?
Well, not really. And, I mean, not any sort of formal guidance. I think that's why sometimes communities develop their own guidelines, like Brewster did.
Okay.
And in Brewster, the select board actually doesn't get too involved in it. They sort of turn it all over to the housing partnership because they're viewing it as it's a housing project, and so we want to think about it from a housing perspective. In Milton, I worked with them a few years ago, and the select, there were several 40Bs that came in at once. And what the select board decided to do there was to just have an open public information meeting for, everybody knew about. So the boards came in, but also interested residents came in. And I know in Brewster, there is a lot of public outreach as well, so that the community doesn't find out that their select board sent a letter of, you know-
Support.
-support in, that nobody knew about. I mean, so they are very, they're very out there on, on outreach. I think you, you know, give yourselves permission to decide, is this a way you want to go forward? You know, you might want to ask the applicants, why do you want to do a LIP? As opposed to a conventional comprehensive permit, and just see what they say.
I think we can develop strategies, right, as a board? If we have come to this situation, I think there's a strategies we can develop ourselves for a process.
Yes.
To thoroughly vet, you know, and, and understand if it's a yea or nay, if we support it or not.
Yes, but I think the issue is that we were asked to have a introduction to a project in December. They wanted to come and talk to us. So I felt that we, I mean, I think it was good that we had this, so that we understand our role. But I do think that there are developers who are interested in moving forward, and if we're going to do the LIP, we can't hold them off too long developing a process because they might as well go to the state then. I mean, and, and you know, we'll go through that process, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're going to hold them up for six months, then, yeah.
Well, I mean, there's, there's never anything wrong with like hearing their, hearing their presentation. And sometimes developers will do that, even though they're still planning to go the conventional route. They will still come and talk to the local officials, because mass housing actually asks, have you talked to the town? So sometimes developers will do that regardless of the approach they're going to take. You know, I, I would just, you're in the driver's seat on this one. So, you know, find out why they want to do this route and, and maybe encourage your housing folks to talk to you about how this might, may or may not address your existing local planning efforts.
And it doesn't seem, I mean, it seems if they want to come in and present a project that we should be open to doing that early just so we hear what they're doing, and then we can have a better idea of how to encourage them in terms of moving forward. And the point being, the main difference with the LIP is that if we support the project, it goes, they can just go to ZBA.
No, no.
Do they still have to go to the eligibility?
They have to go to, yeah. Whatever DHCD is now. I still call it DHCD. Yeah, that was my, that's like one of the most fundamental messages in this, that project eligibility still has to happen. It's just that they can't go through the EO HLC process without a letter of support from you. Whereas the others, they can just go directly.
Okay.
Mr. Millie has a-
Chair, I have an observation I'd like to share with everyone.
Yes, please.
We've had three projects, two in front of the commission, one here in town, where the adequacy of both power and water has come to, to light. And this is something we're going to be facing more and more. The example one was the Seaview project, the affordable housing behind the post office in Sagamore Beach. Required an 8-inch main to be put in by the local water district at a cost of over a million dollars in order for that to go forward. And we were fortunate that we got a mass grant, works grant to pay for that, but that would have stopped the project. There was a project now going on in Hyannis, just before the commission at this time. And they're looking at overcoming the amount of water availability from their district. And there was a project before the commission last month, and in Sandwich, that was approaching the inability to bring enough power into the project site. So those are two very sensitive utilities now, which we're going to be raising their heads more and more often. The town administrator recently took advantage of meeting with the three districts in town and putting us on a review process, so that the three water districts will now be informed when a permit comes in. Because we're actually coming up to the point where we're not, may not be able to provide water for single-family homes or small developments. It's that close. Thank you.
Thank you, that, that's, and that happened in the Buzzards Bay Water District that we had moratorium while they were getting their expansion of their water permit. So that's a, that's a, that's a good point, thank you. Okay. We have another meeting scheduled for seven o'clock, so I want to thank you. This was a really great introduction. I appreciate all the boards and committees that came to participate in this. And we are going to be talking about our comprehensive wastewater management plan next, so if you are interested in staying and hearing about that, you are welcome.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
MJ, do you want me to put that screen up and turn the lights back up? Or are you okay just moving on?
Well, it may be easier for the audience to-
I think we'll, I think we can leave it. The light, I don't mind, the lights are fine. I don't, I'm not having an issue. So, yeah, we do have space for the, for the Board of Health members to come and sit with us at the table for this joint meeting, so.
No, not tonight.
We're going to have comments.
If, at the discretion of the chair, yes.
Do you have comments tonight?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some public time for public comment.
Well, do you have a sign-up sheet?
No, I'll just say, if anyone has a comment, the public comment on non-agenda items has already passed. That, that was at six o'clock. When we opened the meeting. Here we have. So. Is Caitlin here? Is she on?
Yeah, Caitlin is here.
Okay, you can, why don't you come up and sit up here so you're part of the whole discussion? Or over here, either one? And I think we have. I'm checking the Zoom to see, I think Miguel Prieto is on Zoom from the Board of Health, and. Do you have anyone else?
Yes.
Are you there, is that Barbara?
Margaret Real.
Oh, Margaret?
Yes, I can't turn on my camera, I'm trying to, but it's not letting me.
Okay.
But I can talk to you.
Okay. Are you, are you, I'm trying to look through the list of participants, are you?
Board of Health.
Yeah, is, is your name identified here?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Reality, okay. Okay. All right. So our next item is joint meeting with the Board of Health. Do you want to call your board to order?
Sure, okay.
Okay.
Take, this is January 7th, 2025, joint meeting for the Bourne Board of Health and Bourne Board of Selectmen. Take attendance, we have with us Margaret Reali, as we know. Margaret?
I'm here.
Okay. Dusty?
That's it.
Yeah, Bob Collette.
Miguel's here.
And Miguel is on Zoom as well.
Okay, Miguel Prieto, okay.
All right, welcome. We're going to have Helen Gordon from Environmental Partners, that's now Apex, begin the discussion for us. Helen, do you need to screen share anything?
Good evening. I did a summary memo for Marlene that I shared with her. I don't know, Marlene, you want me to bring that up at all?
I think it's probably all right just to, just to walk through it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So the first, the first piece of what we're talking about is just sort of the process that we're going to go through with the MEPA environmental review. And then we'll have some other discussion then with the board about, the Board of Health, about discussion of potential filing of a notice of an intent for watershed permits. And also, the process, as we go through the comprehensive plan, what is the Board of Health's process? How are you going to implement things, and what you need, and how we're going to work together to get this going, so. Okay, Helen, you are, you are up. Can we maybe change this so that she's, we have a speaker view or something?
Yes, we can do that.
This is kind of hard.
Yeah, it's all these people.
All right, Helen, now we can see you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Helen Gordon, I'm a principal at Apex. My name is Helen Gordon, I'm a principal at Apex Environmental Partners. We were the company that has been working with your town to come up with a comprehensive wastewater management. It's a multi-phase plan and it takes numerous years to get through that. We're at the point where we have a recommended plan. And I wanted to go through the schedule for the state review and the process associated with that and where we stand right now. So we met with the Select Board on October 25th where we discussed the MEPA review and the expanded environmental notification form. We had the draft prepared and we went through some detailed conversations about it, asked some specific questions from the Select Board, got some answers and left that meeting with the direction that we were to finalize the submission based on the input that we received at the October meeting and prepare it for their November 12th meeting for a vote to file with MEPA. So we did prepare that update and we presented it and provided it to the Select Board. They voted on November 12th to have it submitted. And the goal was to have Apex send out the documents to MEPA and stakeholders by December 13th with a request for an expedited review. And we had already, in the process after our October meeting, put out the advertisements for November 8th. And in addition, they requested, based on the submission, that we had to provide an assessment of the protocol for analysis of project impacts on environmental justice population. It's a particular review that needs to be added if you're asking for an expedited review. We prepared that within the time period that we needed to and just submitted that on December 26th. We did receive notification from MEPA that it has been received and the filing should appear in the environmental monitor January 8th, 2025. So that will be tomorrow. And the schedule associated with that is, now, part of the MEPA process is that stakeholders were notified, everybody's notified that it was going to appear in the environmental monitor. When it appears in the environmental monitor, people can view it, they can click on the link, they can access all the data and all the information, read the recommended plan and create comments that they can, that they have to upload directly to the state's website. And it's all very prescriptive in their approach. And they walk you through the process online very easily. So it really is easy for stakeholders to comment. The comment period is up on January 28th. Some subsequent to that, MEPA does the review. And we anticipate right now that this will be a single ENF, which is a quicker process. We may have their decision with their certificate as early as February 7, 2025, or as late as February 14, 2025. And what happens with that certificate is they also provide question, the questions that were submitted in the comments. The next step for Apex is to pull together the final recommended plan for presentation to town meeting. And what we would be doing is taking all the comments in the certificate and incorporating those comments and attaching it to the entire recommended plan. And that's what you will go to the town meeting October 20th, 2025, which is the schedule that we're on right now. And the one thing I do want to, and I'm going to stop after I make this comment. And we can talk specifically about the recommended plan and the approach that the town is taking. But please remember that the recommended plan, it's a management plan, it's designed to be a dynamic living document. It's regularly updated and refined over the 20-year period. So yes, it's a 20-year plan. And when you go to town meeting, what you're really voting on is, this is the approach we want to take and move forward. And you take it basically by five-year chunks. So you'll go ahead and do the first five-year implementation, see where you are, see if there's any tweaks that need to be made for the next five years, and then you continue on. It's common practice that the CWMPs get updated as things progress, depending on what the results of some of the implementations are. If you get better results, then we might be able to tweak some of the recommended plan in future years that you might be able to reduce the work that you do. So again, this is a living document. When you do vote at town meeting, it's not as if you're voting to do every single project over the 20-year period. So I just wanted to kind of outline that piece. And I'm going to stop for a minute if there's any questions specifically on the MEPA process. And then MJ and Marlene, if you want me to go through the plan and where, you know, generally what the approaches that the community is going to be taking, I can do that.
Any questions from the board on the MEPA process? Any questions from the Board of Health on the MEPA process? Any questions from the audience on the MEPA process? George, you want to come up to the microphone? And identify yourself, please.
I'm George Seaver. I am from Kalamet. I belong to a group that has been taking samples and analyzing them since 1988. We have published five papers in scientific journals on that data, the most recent in November. My co-author is Alan Cusarian, who is a member, a resident of Kalamet and is a senior scientist at MBL and knows a lot about the biological end of it. And I have three questions. I could ask a lot more than that, but not for this forum. The first one is, came about from what I just heard. The ending of the comment period on January 28th, for the state, that is, and how do you participate in that comment period?
So that's actually going to lead into a question that I had. So it would seem, Helen, that you are very familiar with the environmental monitor process and how to access that and how to review all the documents and how to make comments. How can the Town of Bourne post that information? So on January 8th, tomorrow, the environmental monitor publication is going to happen. And once that happens, do we set up a bulletin on our website that says environmental monitor posting, here's the link to see the report and, which will bring you to the place to make comments? Is that how we're going to handle this?
If that's how I would suggest you handle it, you're not unimportant required to do that because it's in the environmental monitor and all the stakeholders have been notified that it will be there. They'll be on the lookout and you go onto the website and look for the project, which will say the Bourne CWMP, you look on it and you'll have, be able to access the documents that were uploaded, you can download them, you can just view them online. And then there's a link to where you add comments and.
So I will say that I have no idea how to get to the environmental monitor page to access all this information. And maybe I'm a stakeholder and maybe I'm not. But I would, I think that's easy so that we can say to people, if you're interested in making comments, this is where you go, to the button on the website, and we'll make it really easy for people to access.
We will hit that link tomorrow.
Okay, yes.
It doesn't exist yet, but when it's published, I will receive it. And we can create, we can create a place from the homepage where people can go to the Bourne website, click on the homepage link, and it will take them to the monitor. And then everything has to happen within the monitor.
In the monitor, all the comments and everything is within that and within the monitor process.
Correct, so any questions or comments should go directly there because that gets sent to the state and then they prepare the certificate. We get a copy of all those comments and then we can further comment on them based on what the questions and the comments are.
Okay, so does that answer your question? So after the, after our thing is published in the environmental monitor, there will be a link on the town website for you to get access to all the information, all the documents, and to be able to make comments directly to the state.
Well, my comment initially is that I feel that we, the residents of Kalamet, will be affected dramatically by this. And I think that we are stakeholders for that reason. And yet, we have not received anything up to this point along those lines. So I think we should have a little bit more visibility than we've had in the past as stakeholders. I'll proceed now to my three questions, if I can. The first one is, when and who took the data that led to the nitrogen impairment status for Switte, McGansett? From, my guess would be it's from the Mass Estuaries Project of 2015. So that's question number one.
I believe that's correct. It's the Mass Estuaries Project.
The reason that's an important question is that since 2015, there have been significant changes in the nitrate input to these estuaries because of the dramatic changes in atmospheric deposition. And let me quote, Buzzards Bay Coalition is one of your stakeholder monitoring organizations. It's quoted in your plan. And they stated in their 2022 report, Buzzards Bay score reflects significant reductions in nitrogen. They continue, six years ago, from 2015, which is the MEP date of their, their analysis, nitrogen pollution is even better than expected since then, with the state of pollution in 2018 recovering to levels not seen since 1995. Expansion of eel grass beds has occurred throughout the bay and even a bay scallop harvest of record size has occurred. This is the Buzzards Bay Coalition who was a part of your stakeholder.
Right, were they talking about the Buzzards Bay watershed, Buzzards Bay?
Buzzards Bay Coalition is a organization.
What area are they talking about?
The Buzzards Bay Estuaries.
In general, right?
Well, yeah.
Collectively.
The five of them.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned, I've been written, I've been writing up mostly two, but actually I go up to five in some instances. So that's, that's why that question is important. When was the data taken that classified McGansett's critique as a nitrogen impaired estuary? And I read to you what the, oh, by the way, the Buzzards Bay Coalition has now moved on from nitrogen and now they're into climate change and sea level rise. So that's, by their actions, they're telling you what they think about the nitrogen state of these estuaries. The second question I have is, yeah, and this is a crucial one. What percentage of estuary nitrate is from septic tanks, individual septic tanks? I don't think your system has been able to separate septic from other sources. I have and so hasn't MBL and other scientists, scientists in a publishing, scientific journals. And the final question is, if what the Buzzards Bay Coalition said is true, does the de minimis status, as your report describes, now for McGansett's critique allow it to be classified as de minimis? That's a strange term, I know, but that's what they use. And that means it's below the noise and doesn't need any change. So those are the three questions.
Can you repeat?
When and who the data was.
Can you just repeat your last one?
Oh, the last one was.
Percentage from septic?
De minimis.
That was two.
It's in page 157 in your report.
Yeah, okay.
And that has the status of, in that last page, they say that McGansett's critique has the lowest of the nitrogen impairment thing of any of the estuaries by a long shot. But it still is above the 3% requirement to be classified as a de minimis. Well, I think now it is below that. So that it would be classified as de minimis, which puts it off, off the table as far as making big changes.
Oh, I need to interrupt you. Helen, I'm not seeing you anymore, but I have a question for you about this. Because I had a meeting with Representative Viera, who was, I believe, here.
In the back row.
And some representatives from Falmouth on this issue. And there is a way, isn't there a way to file, and I think they only do it every two years, and the last time was January of '23, so we couldn't do it in '24, to, to file a question about this with the estuaries project? Is it, is there a process for that?
In relationship to the de minimis?
Or, yeah, to the, yes, to the relationship to the de minimis or changing the status? Is there some, every two years you can file, they take applications or something?
They do. And I do know that we had a conversation with Mass DEP about this and I have to look up what their determination at that time was. And I think it was, I want to say it might have been last year.
Yeah, because I think when I, we had that meeting, we had missed the 2023 filing deadline. And so the 2025 was the next one that we could possibly do.
I can look into that deadline.
The reason I'm raising this question is that I want to know who did it and what data they used. I don't believe they made measurements of nitrate. I think they did, they looked at a murkiness and they looked at various, the fact that.
There.
Can I finish?
Go ahead, Helen, there is a report, the Estuaries Report.
Right. The answers, and I'm not trying to be flippant, I just want to start my answer this way, sorry. The answers to these questions can be found through the report. I know it's huge and I know it's large and I know there's a lot of information in there. In terms of the TMDLs, they were set, as you said, through the process, the modeling process. There are sentinel stations, they regularly monitor the sentinel stations for the nitrogen levels.
Nitrate.
And report out. They haven't updated those TMDLs. There are a couple of the watersheds in. There are a couple of the watersheds in Bourne that actually don't have TMDLs yet, and they are on future lists to be analyzed. To date, since the TMDLs have been put in place, and even with the Sentinel air locations being measured, the STP hasn't gone forward and done any holistic changes to the withdrawal rates that they identified when they did the first TMDL studies. So I don't know if they're go, if they have plans to update them in total, but there is a process to go through this de minimis request, to request that it be reviewed. I recall having the conversation, but I, I don't want to misspeak on which watershed we were talking about. I'd have to look up.
Well, that is why I want to see their data.
So George, these are, I think these are comments that you should be making as part of the comments to the state on the environmental monitor posting. That, I, these are really things, this is between, this is, these are state decisions that we don't really have impact on, so I think that if you make your comments on the, to the state as part of their review, that would be appropriate, and they will be included in the final report. I, I'm going to move, have you move on because you've taken a number of times and there's someone else.
Well, it's been nine years since they took their data. And we know that the nitrate in these estuaries in Buzzards Bay has changed by up to 60%. I don't know if you're aware, let me finish. I don't know if you're aware of the change in atmospheric deposition. It's been very large, and everybody acknowledges that. So it would seem to me, just those two numbers I just gave you, should tell you that it needs to be updated. And there's a lot of data out there, including mine, 35 years, four times a year in the winter, measurements in the winter, which is crucial, by the way. So anyway.
Thank you. I think we're going to kind of implement sort of like, one minute, we're going to implement a sort of like town meeting kind of timeframe where speakers are kind of, be concise and have, try to do, make your statements or questions in three minutes, or we'll be here till midnight. So that's it. I have, I'm not sure who was first. Gray, you can go, and then who was ever, I'll recognize the next person.
I'm a hydrologist by training.
You need to.
Name for the record.
Aim for the record.
My name is Thomas Gray Curtis, Jr. I'm retired. I taught fluid dynamics at the University of Florida and groundwater hydraulics. And was one of the implementers of the stormwater management model, which is used for modeling runoff. And I'm now retired. However, I live in Kalamet, and I'm concerned about why this whole thing is going forward. Number one question, and I, the thing that I find most important is that you define your data sources because modeling can say anything you want if you choose the right data to emphasize. And one of the biggest problems is to get a fair, scientific, objective assessment of the data to be used in the modeling. And I've run into many, many cases where data was chosen selectively so the certain objectives could be met for the results that you wanted to get. And so what I request is that you look very carefully to make sure you have all the sources of information, and you get an assessment of each one of their impacts. For example, in terms of the nitrification, if the problem is nitrification of Buzzards Bay, then what are the sources? And basically, there are, there are a lot of them, and I don't want to see any of them disregarded. Thank you.
Thank you. I would, I'd just note that not all of Kalamet is in the McGansett's critique watershed, and that there are parts of, there are parts of Kalamet that are actually in the Buzzards Bay watershed that is not impaired. So you have to be, you have to look at the environmental monitor at the specific watershed that you're referring to and to determine. And I happen to be in the McGansett's critique watershed, so I am subject to the regulations for that watershed. Where you happen to be is not in that watershed, so you're in the Buzzards Bay watershed, so. Hello. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Corinne Peterson from the Buzzards Bay Coalition. I just wanted to provide a couple of clarifying remarks. All of our data, we have, we collect water quality monitoring data, including total nitrogen data on, at more than 200 locations baywide, including McGansett and Squitique. We've collected up until and continue to do so. We collect pursuant to Quality Assurance Project Plan protocols approved by Mass DEP and the U.S. EPA. All of our data is analyzed at MBL. And so that is all published, it's all public, it's on savebuzzardsbay.org. You can find your watershed, you can click on the sampling location. I just took, I actually just, because Mr. Seaver brought up McGansett, I took a quick look. McGansett still in 2023 is above the total nitrogen threshold established in the TMDL. And so there is reason for the town to take action, and I congratulate you for having this and doing so. With respect to atmospheric deposition of nitrogen and sources of nitrogen, yes, the Clean Air Act back in the 1990s, you are seeing some effects of the Clean Air Act implementations and the reduction of the deposition of nitrogen. You do not see that in every estuary. And typically, we see it more on the western side of the bay than the eastern side of the bay. So I just wanted to provide those clarifying remarks.
Thank you very much, Corinne. Okay, any other hands for questions at this time? Okay, moving right along. It might be helpful, Helen, if you do talk a little bit about overview of what the recommended plan includes, even if you just read from what's in your, somewhere in your. Your little memo here about what we're planning on doing. The recommended plan?
Yeah. So, recommended plan. So after the various analysis we did with the town, we had meetings, we went through the process of identifying options, assessing various approaches. The town of Bourne has decided to choose widespread general use approved, innovative and alternative onsite waste fire systems. And one core sewer area of the Phineas Harbor is what we're calling the first round of implementation, which is to address the TMDL watersheds. And then as part of adaptive management planning, a second core sewer area proposed for Burnell Bay and additional widespread, what we're calling the general use IA systems for Pecasek Harbor and Pecasek, Uga watershed. Currently, just so everybody knows, there's a list of five approved manufacturers that have systems that are considered general use approved IA systems for nitrogen removal. Under the recommended plan, you'll be tied to the current Title V requirements. And therefore, the number of the implementation will have to be conducted in a five-year period unless you go for a watershed permit. In the TMDL watersheds are wrong. The watersheds that are not currently considered natural resource nitrogen sensitive areas, those numbers, those systems can be upgraded over the course of the 20-year period. So it doesn't have to be done in one five-year period. So, and I did prepare a table that shows that if we were to use the recommended plan without a watershed permit for McGansett, Squitique Harbor, we have to upgrade 285 systems to the general use IA systems in order to meet the nitrogen loading requirements. And for Phineas Harbor, it's 1,133. And that would have to be done according to the current Title V regulations in the five-year period.
So I think this might be a good place to kind of stop and have some discussion with the Board of Health about implementation. And we have two, only two watersheds that are subject to, that are subject to the, the new Title V regulations because we only have two watersheds that have been determined to have a TMDL and to be impaired. And those are, those are the Phineas Harbor watershed and the McGansett's critique watershed. And in, somewhere in the vast reports of all the reports that we've been doing, it is possible in an appendix to look up your address based on your watershed to determine whether or not you're in a TMDL watershed, whether your address is or whether your address isn't. And you have to be very specific about it because, I will just say, for my house, I'm in the TMDL watershed, and the house that's to the west of me, the very next house, is not. So knowing where you are in a watershed is really important. But I think it's important to have some discussion with the Board of Health for the Board of Selectmen and the people to understand your role in, in terms of implementation of the CWMP and what triggers review, what brings something to the attention of the Board of Health and under the, under the regulations that we're under now, which as far as our CWMP is concerned, that is probably the regulations that will be in place for McGansett's critique. The question of Phineas Harbor and whether or not we would file a watershed permit there because we're considering sewer-ing, and so you wouldn't necessarily want to have people install septic systems that are going to eventually be sewered. So that's another question. So I think understanding the implementation and what it means, like if someone sells their house, do they have to upgrade? If they do, building a new house, if they're adding on to their house? When do they have to do it? And are there any regulations or are you considering any regulations in the Board of Health that will require upgrades? And if so, and let's just kind of focus on McGansett's critique for the moment. Do you have any thoughts on that that you could share?
So at this time, there's no specific Board of Health regulations that would trigger an upgrade? It would just be strictly Title V, so DEP's regulations that we are, we follow. So at this time, the only required upgrades to these best available nitrogen-reducing technology is for new construction right now. And then these other homes within McGansett's critique watershed would have until 2030 to come into compliance, at which point they would be out of compliance, and we would start notification processes on that. We would be notified with Title V inspections during a title transfer. Otherwise, it would just be as we come across them or, you know, as we're starting to look up all these addresses and make some kind of database to show which properties are within this watershed, which is not complete yet, but we are working on it. So that's where we're at right now.
You have any comments, questions from the board?
Assuming that not all of these folks would have to come before the Board of Health individually to approve, for approvals and so forth, since it's already mandated, right? And we're not having to issue any variances or approve any variances. And what, what would happen in the case of, if somebody doesn't meet the Title V setback requirements and so forth, you know, those are things we'd have to consider because, you know, we don't have cookie cutter properties here, of course. And a lot of that would have to be taken into consideration, too. I also think these numbers might be somewhat reduced by natural attrition, you know, with failed systems and so forth that people would have to replace anyway at some point, if at least a percentage of those over the next five years will naturally fail and wouldn't, you know, mandate replacement anyhow, but.
The Board of Health hearings is, so if people are doing these automatic, if they're voluntarily upgrading per DEP regulations is, if they're automatically doing natural removal, the Title V setbacks to resource areas wouldn't trigger a board meeting. If they're doing an upgrade and including increased flow, then we'd go to a board meeting, and any property setback variances would trigger a board meeting as well.
MJ?
Yes, Stacey.
I believe it's got to be five years ago or so. You probably could correct me what the date was, but it doesn't matter that the state was putting out a ruling they wanted Capewide to start out any house within 1,000 feet or five, start out at 500 feet, and then a number of years after that, 1,000 feet. The system had to be upgraded to an IA system. Now, here in Buzzards Bay, I firmly believe that that treatment plant has increased our seaweed, which in turn purifies the water and everything, and it's a great, great benefit. Now, if you can do it with IA, all right, fine. But if not, should we be considering small mini plants, especially Phineas Harbor, McGansett? And that, it's a lot of thinking. It's what's going to give us the best results, though. That's the thing we got to get the figures on, I believe.
So, so one of the things is on the chart, like Helen, when you talked about the Phineas Harbor being 1,133 septic systems to be done, if we go with the plan for sewer-ing to the Bourne Middle School, that number is reduced, am I correct?
It's reduced to 72, isn't it?
There's some 400 number and then there's some 200 number.
436.
Yeah.
Is she there?
Mm-hmm.
She is, I think she's looking.
Ow, the watershed, wow. Actually, I don't know. Are you there, Helen?
436 parcels, Finney's Harbor, over 20 years.
Yeah, 436. That is right, 436. So there is some analysis in the report about the difference between the cost of sewer-ing, 436 parcels, and that's based on, that's not based on 100% removal, right?
Correct.
So one of the, one of the possible scenarios is that by moving those parcels to the wastewater treatment plant at the middle school, the middle school wastewater treatment plant is outside of the Finney's Harbor watershed. And so there has been some comment by some knowledgeable people that if we got that 100% removal, it would even, we would with much lower sewer-ing be able to meet the TMDL. We have, part of our plan is comprehensive wastewater management plan is to investigate that scenario. And in that scenario where, and there is in the filing, an area designed, you know, laid out to be sewered to go to the middle school plant. In that case, if, if we were to have a watershed permit in that McGansett's critique, I mean in that Finney's Harbor area, because part of it's going to be sewered, how would the Board of Health look at the houses or the properties that are in the watershed, not in the sewered area? Would you, that were building a house or increasing flow, would you put them under the same Title V regulations as if there were no watershed permit? I mean, how would you look at that? I mean, because we've had a question of, of people that say, well, if you're, if, you know, if I'm, if, if you had a watershed permit, I wouldn't have to put in an IA system. But would you still require them to put in an IA system to improve the quality? I mean, and do you contemplate creating regulations about that?
It's something that-
What is it you all have to do to support this?
Yeah, it's definitely something the Board should consider, especially if the town is going to implement a watershed permit and we are doing so by sewer-ing that area. If we sewer that area, now the other parcels don't have to upgrade to these IA technologies. Are houses that increase flow going to negate the impact that the sewer-ing is having on the nitrogen loading? So it's something the Board definitely should think about and while we are reviewing our septic regulations and if that's something that they want to consider.
Are you in the process of reviewing your septic regulations?
Yes.
And what kind of things are you considering?
Bringing most of them up into today's code standards so that the code citations within all of our regulations are pertaining to current Wetland Act code citations, our current bylaws for the town building codes, so that they're just up to date, but also looking at our impaired areas and seeing if there's something else that the Board wants to implement as well.
So Dusty, you brought up the question about being within 500 feet or 1,000 feet. I don't think the state implemented any of those, although they had discussion about it. I don't think they made any of that part of the regulation, right?
Didn't they bring it before us to make, because the original ruling from the state was 1,000 feet. We wanted to modify and go 500 feet. Then we brought up the questionnaire and worry about, you do that up and down this whole, the whole Cape, you're talking thousands of systems. And not everybody has the money and no financing, nothing's being said by the feds or state that they were going to help. So I'm kind of thinking that's gone by the wayside and we're left to deal with our own problems to get to the results that we're looking for.
So most of the, most of the Cape is actually going primarily with sewer-ing.
Correct.
So Falmouth is going with sewer-ing, Orleans is going with sewer-ing, Mashpee's going with sewer-ing. So that question, you know, they're, they're doing sewer-ing.
And on that, they started a long time ago. Falmouth is 20 years ago at least, town-wise, they were doing that. First, they started all along the shoreline and then they slowly crept in and that, and I could never see Bourne never attempting or even looking at it. And then when we put the plant up here, which you were on the board, I was on the board, and that I see the dramatic results from it because I'm right on the water. Seaweed came back, that was barren, shellfish is improved. I think it's great, but unless every, unless you do a major area that's hugging the shoreline, it's of no value, you know, to me.
I'm going to let Steve Mueller go first because he hasn't had a chance to speak yet. So Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen Mueller from Sagamore Beach. My, my concern is that as we head into this, we're actually telling people that as of July 1st, they have to start thinking about replacing a system, which may cost $35,000 to $65,000 before July 15th or July of 2030, that's five years from now. So you're talking about maybe 1,500 systems that'll have to be installed. Do we have the installation base to be able to do that? Do we have the people to be able to inspect it? Do we have the people to be able to monitor and maintain these systems? The other thing that I was concerned about was that I was reading that within the report that it was going to cost someplace around $2,000 a year for both maintenance and operation of these, these systems. Now, we've had an example in Katomet of a small system put in by Cayman Marine that's capable of handling 80 houses or something, I've heard. Why we're not looking at putting those types of systems spread around the area, we had talked about perhaps putting one up at Hoxie and doing North Sagamore if it had needed to be done. So far, we're off that radar. But I think we're really, by jumping into this IA system, which incidentally doesn't remove potassium, which means all of our ponds and freshwater areas are going to continue to, to deal with algae blooms, because these IA systems do not clean up the water sufficiently to address that issue. I, I just think we're throwing everything into the IA solution and it's not really the right solution for us. Because of cost, because of inadequate treatment and because of the implementation timeframe at five years for all of these folks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
George Seaver again. I would like to continue on what was just said. These IA systems are $50,000, the one I looked at in the back of your plan, $50,000. But that's not the real kicker for me. They have to be inspected quarterly. They are run by a biofilm, which is very sensitive to various chemicals. They have a whole list of about 15 household chemicals that cannot go into it or it will destroy the film. Things like alcohol, rubber gloves, as I say, there's a list of 15. And so the $2,000 a year upkeep thing is not, is, is a low figure from what I get from reading those requirements for that no system. As far as, again, on the dollars and cents thing, North Falmouth does have a sewage treatment plant and it became the second largest source of nitrogen in Snug Harbor that I saw in 35 years. And that's because it broke down. From 2017 to 2020, it stopped taking out nitrogen and they didn't know about it. And I went down and measured that harbor, Snug Harbor, and the reading went up to 10 times higher than what we are getting in Skriti Harbor. So they are now facing a $35 million upgrading charge. Similarly, and I'm sure you know of this, with Wareham, Wareham takes Buzzes Bay sewage. They are asking Bourne to pay $7 million for their upgrade. And they are also facing further down the road, $135 million upgrade to their sewage treatment plant. So these are very serious changes financially that you should take and consider. I agree that 50,000 plus 2,000 a year is going to hurt a lot of people.
Yes.
I'm Mike Lipchek. I live in Katomet. So a few minutes ago, you cited a possible watershed permit for Finney's Harbor because why make a lot of people install expensive upgrades to their septic if you're just going to hook them up? So why are you not considering the same for McGansett's critique? Not only the possibility that was mentioned in the plan of having a WWTF in the Katomet area, there's also the possibility that in 20 years, that septic, the, the IA systems will have improvements and you're giving people a lot more time to have systems that fail and by attrition, they get replaced. But now you're, if you stick with the Plan A, then it has, the problem has to be solved in five years. So you, you don't have any benefit from future technology and the possibility that you end up having to do a WWTF anyway. So I, I don't, the watershed permit sounds like a magic bullet. So what's the reason why you would do it in one harbor and not the other?
Thank you. I will, do you want to address that or do you want to just take comments?
I think we want to take comments.
Okay. I will, gentleman here on the front.
Alexandra Klein, Shore Road, somewhere between Monument Beach and Old Bourne Village. Okay, so with regard to Finney's Harbor, so I've heard the number, 1,133 parcels if we go the route of the IA system installation. And I, I did see the attachment where the, where the addresses are listed. Now with regard to the course, if we went with a, with the sewers, 436 parcels. I've seen the map, but I haven't seen addresses. So is there a list of addresses for the 436 parcels that might be sewed in Finney's?
It's, there's a map of it, but I don't think it's, I don't think we've identified the addresses yet and it might be premature because we haven't, part of the MEPA process is for us to say to the state, what do you think about this? And for the DEP to say, oh, we like that idea, you should pursue that idea. We, we have to go through permitting to figure that out. So that would be, it would probably happen later. I mean, it's pretty easy to see which things are, if you're in that area, it's a yes, maybe yes, maybe no. But there's a lot of outlying areas in the watershed that are clearly not part of that sewer.
The other comment I would make is, I know that for Finney's, for the sewer-ing, there were some assumptions made. For example, that the wastewater treatment facility at the school would be expandable. What if it isn't? You know, what do we, do our work and we, you know, what's our plan B, in other words? Do we go to the 1,133 parcels then? And as somebody mentioned here, the time clock starts ticking. What about those homeowners? They'll be under the gun for that timeline. So, you know, I urge you to think about those things. And with respect to the Board of Health, I think, I don't know your name, but-
Caitlin.
Caitlin Shaysa.
Caitlin mentioned that the Board of Health might be revising your policies moving forward. So in a situation where you have, say, sewerage in Finney's now, we're, we're in the future now. And now a homeowner comes forward and either has to do something, and he's not connected to the system, has to do something to his system, either it fails or does an upgrade or what have you, you know, what does that homeowner need to do? Do they now go to an IA system or under a traditional Title V? You know, those, those are things I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what the Board of Health will do in the future. And I'm assuming that you'll publicly notify for those meetings when you discuss those?
Always.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So the Board hasn't made a decision yet?
No, so as it-
So you haven't decided?
As it stands right now, if the town pursued a watershed permit with core sewer, the other parcels in the watershed not sewered wouldn't be subject to an upgrade for just, a septic system upgrade for a failure or anything else at that matter, as it stands right now.
What, what, what if they don't go for a watershed permit?
So if we don't go for a watershed permit, all parcels within that, within the defined watershed would have to upgrade. As of right now, if they are doing new construction or increase of flow, currently, they would be subject to the best available nitrogen-reducing technology. Any property owners that are upgrading septic systems right now have the choice to put in a conventional system if they want to and know that then in five years, they might have to upgrade again or they can upgrade now.
Okay. So without, I mean, without a watershed permit, under the current Board of Health regulations, the, if you're doing an increase in flow or if you have new construction, you're required to do the upgrade to IA system?
That's just per Title V. The Board of Health doesn't have a regulation stipulating that, but we have to follow Title V.
So Title V says that you have to do that?
Yes.
But if you're, but you said something else about deciding you wanted to keep the-
Yeah, so we've had a couple of systems that are in failure currently and homeowners have asked if they have to upgrade to an IA system right now. Per DEP, they do not until 2030. So they can choose to upgrade to a conventional, think, if that is their choice, knowing that in five years that they might have to upgrade to an IA technology. And every permit that I get in to the office that is a conventional system in that area, I do reach out and make sure that they are aware of those regulations.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Hi, Bob Dwyer from Pecassett. First of all, I want to congratulate the, the Select Board, the Board of Health, and also environmental partners for all the work that they've done to, to put this, this program together. What is obvious to me is, is that the different segments, the different watersheds in this plan seem to have all of the guts of what's needed for, applying for a 20-year watershed permit. And that includes the McGansett watershed. The landscape with the design of these IA systems is changing very rapidly. There's dozens of them that are under testing at the Mastech Center over in Mashpee. New ones are going to be approved, the efficiency is going to increase. New ones are coming online that can also remove phosphorus as well as nitrogen. And by the time some of these things go in the ground, even at five years, the landscape is going to be very different. And the burden is that if all of these go on as watershed permits, all of the work falls on the Board of Health. The advantage of going with a state-run five-year program is that it is state-run and it's the state's responsibility. That's fine for town government, it's not fine for citizens who would much rather deal with town boards rather than deal directly with the state. From past experience, I, I know what that's like. What I would, might suggest is that something like watershed permits be considered and at the- same time, some kind of a grant opportunity be looked at to put all of the management of this, all of the day-to-day sampling, all of the day-to-day inspections, under, what do they call it, a responsible management entity? And from my ear to the ground, it sounds like there's a county-wide one being developed. So it might be under county government, it might be under some contractor for them, but there'd be one contractor who would have the responsibility for doing the day-to-day management of this, as opposed to, you know, the two or three people who are the actual health agents in the town. So I strongly suggest that you look at this as the structure for a wastewater permit for any of the watersheds. And that's only two right now. Right now, I think, I think we're, the end of the year before Pecasset Harbor has one that's even submittable to the state, a year to probably for the state and EPA to approve it, and the Pecasset River hasn't even started. So once the, both of those are designated NSAs, there's a two-year waiting period, and then even if the state takes over, there's a five-year implementation period of that. So we're eight, nine years away for a deadline for those. Again, that's something that could be put under a watershed permit, and as experience develops, both in Bourne and in other towns, the whole process could then be turned over to a contractor and draw from the experience base, as opposed to having to tread new water here, tread new ground. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have actually included in our planning the fact that a responsible management entity is probably key, as far as if we go with that, the IA system kind of thing. I think one of the things that we haven't talked about is the difference between, and you brought it up, the watershed permit puts the onus of enforcement on the town and not on the state. And so the current Title V, what we've been working, operating under for Title V for years, is it's the state's regulation, and it's their enforcement. And there's nothing built in as far as enforcement for the end of the 2030. There's, we don't know what's going to happen in 2030. I mean, I think you said something about notifying people, but that's not your responsibility, is it? It's not the Board of Health's responsibility to notify people if they're out of compliance?
It's not written in Title V that it is.
Right, right. So that, one of the problems with the way that the law was actually written and the regulations were written, is that they put in this deadline of 2030, but there's no, there's no enforcement for it. It's similar to cesspools. I mean, if you have a cesspool in a house that's in a trust, there's no enforcement. And so putting the, saying that there is an enforcement, you know, there's this 2030 deadline, if the town doesn't do a watershed permit in McGansett's critique, that enforcement is totally on the state. If we do a watershed permit, then the town is then taking on the responsibility for the enforcement. And that, well, you could say that it's, we could turn it all over to a responsible management entity, but we don't have that opportunity yet. And the county, although they've been working on that as a county plan, that progress has been pretty slow. Corinne, did you want to say something? You had your hand up.
And MJ, if I could just add, RME will not be cheap.
Yeah. RME will not be, I mean, it's actually, the numbers are kind of staggering. I mean, when you look at the numbers of, particularly in the Finney's Harbor IA system versus sewerage, I mean, the numbers are staggering. Whatever it is, we're going to have to have a whole separate conversation about financing, and that's a conversation for another day. Corinne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So something else to consider, a benefit of filing for a watershed permit for both Finney's Harbor and McGansett, is that the town will be SRF available. So financing, whatever solution, even if it's an IA across McGansett solution, the town can apply for 0% loans from the state revolving fund, which could drive the cost down for each individual homeowner. There's also the Cape and Water Protection Fund, which is giving, I think, 25% grants. And so when you file for a watershed permit, you have 20 years to implement it, and then you have these financing tools that are available to you with a watershed permit that you wouldn't have if you were just requiring all the residents to upgrade within five years. Just another benefit for watershed permits.
And that was a big benefit that was touted when they were first talking about the watershed permits in their initial, was the SRF. And I think Wellfleet actually did an SRF loan for IA systems. I don't think they've figured out exactly how they're doing it, but they did get the SRF approval. Great, go ahead.
Thank you. I have one question. Is there any knowledge of the proportion of nitrification that's coming from the septic What part of the loading is due to the septic system? For example, if a large percentage of the loading is coming from the fertilization of abutting land, and that's runoff, then maybe what we do to the septic system isn't going to solve the problem. What about the possibility of restricting the use of fertilizers that can be run off into the water? To find out if that has an impact? Thank you.
And there have been some successful implementations, you know, been more implementation of the fertilizer restrictions. When we were initially talking about alternatives, we didn't go too much in that direction because enforcement is kind of difficult. Keith?
Keith Barber, Pecasset. I just have a couple of comments on things that have been said. So as far as the cost is concerned, I kind of look at it as the cost of not doing it is much more expensive than the cost of doing this. We're going to leave the Cape for our children, and our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren, and if nothing is done, the water is going to be just even more horrible. So we live in Pecasset, we're in the process of upgrading our septic system. We don't have to do it. We're doing it because we're trying to get ahead of it. When everybody has to do it, it's going to be a real issue. So that's a way to get around that cluster of doing it, is to do it now. I just want to mention also that, you know, where Bourne is considering this CWMP. Falmouth passed theirs in 2014. So just so we have that perspective. As far as the monitoring is concerned, and I'm not 100% on this, but somebody can correct me, I believe the monitoring is for two years, and that's to prove that your system works, and then the monitoring goes away, or at least it's reduced. As far as loans, so the Bonstable County has a very strong loan program, which the rates are from 0% to 2% to 4%, depending on income and other restrictions. But there is money available, and I've spoken to them a number of times because we're in the process, and the system is very simple. They're very, very friendly.
I have a question for you, because we got some information that they weren't giving the 0% and 2% loans to IA systems.
4% for IA. If you're not, if you don't have to do it, it's 4%. And that's a pickle we're going to be in. Like I said, we--
You can get the 4% loan, but--
We can get the 4% loan, even though we don't like it, but, you know, we're doing it now for a couple of reasons. One, we're trying to get ahead of it. And two, we want to set an example. And I think that is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question was asked, as I did at the start, what percentage of the nitrate in estuaries comes from septic sources? The answer is, it's unmeasurable. And that has been presented in a paper that we've published, particularly the one in November. Let me tell you something about publishing in a scientific journal, as opposed to, let's say, the Buzzards Bay Coalition. You send it into the journal, they send it out to three, two to three anonymous reviewers, scientific ones. It takes six months to a year to go through that process, and then it's either approved or not, and then published. So it's a much more credible source of data. Between 2004, this is the graph of the nitrate at Squidteague Harbor, between 1988 and 2024. Since 2004, the trend line has been down over that period of time by 63%. So we are not in an increasing nitrate era. We are in the opposite of it. I know, reading the newspapers, you wouldn't know that, but we are. That is also confirmed by papers published by scientists at the Marine Biological, like Ivan Valley Ella, for instance, who show that population density is what determines whether nitrate from a septic system reaches the estuary. And with a population density below a certain number, it doesn't reach there. And that applies to McGansett's critique. Because we have, in the watershed, we have a good portion of the military reservation, which is virtually unpopulated. We also have 15,000 acres of the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve, which has very strict rules. For instance, soldiers' training have to bring a porter party if they're in that part of the land. So it's almost certain that there is very little or no septic nitrate reaching the estuaries in Squidteague Harbor. So if you were to extract huge financial upgrades to those things, it would have no effect. And I don't expect you to believe me, given what you've heard tonight, but I would seriously look into that, just what has been happening to nitrate coming into the harbors, and what percentage of that is from septic. Thank you.
Steve, you have another comment?
Thank you, Richard. I greatly appreciate, I'll let go a comment made earlier of having this forum. I actually read the report, parts one and two. Are we beyond being able to say, no, we, the people, really don't want to do strictly AI, IA, we really want to look at doing watershed permits and giving the town the 20 years? I mean, there's a reason that there's only one other town on the Cape that's doing what we're proposing. And I understand the part about enforcement and so forth, but if the Board of Health needs some help with policies and regulations, they need not only to look at either Falmouth or Mashpee, they've already addressed many of the questions we're having this evening. My concern is, we've put in this application, are we done? Are we just wasting time this evening, going, other than educating the populace about what we've done? I mean, that's my question. I mean, could we change this, other than voting no at town meeting?
So can I respond?
Yes, please.
So the question for the Select Board on watershed permits is independent of the CWMP. So your CWMP lays out your recommended plan for these watersheds, actually townwide, for all your watersheds over 20 years. That is the CWMP. That is what MIPA is reviewing. The watershed permit is a completely separate question for the Select Board as an option under the Title V regulations for NSAs. So I know that it's very confusing to be going through both of these processes at the same time. And other Cape towns who already did their CWMP aren't doing them at the same time. But because Title V changed concurrently with Bourne doing your CWMP, you're facing them at the same time. So you don't have the luxury of figuring out your CWMP, and then figuring out if you want to do a watershed permit. So I do want the Select Board to try to remember that what you decide for mapping out the future, for the next 20 years, townwide, all of your watersheds comprehensively, is what you're asking town meeting approval for in the fall. Now, how you get there, how you implement that plan, is your decision on whether or not you think a watershed permit is an appropriate tool to use to implement your plan.
Thank you.
And I also want to say that the CWMP is not--
definitive.
--a final document, ever. It has an adaptive management plan. So there's like these trees that you have to like, all right, so we're thinking about this, are we going to do this? Are we going to do the watershed permit? There's a series of decisions that have to be made. And I think that the comments that the public makes on the filing that we have made with the state, the comments in the comment period for our plan, the responses that we get from the state on our plan, will help give us direction on where we're going and how we should go about doing it. It's interesting that people have kind of said that, you know, they really haven't known that we've been doing this. We've been doing this since 2020. I mean, we've been doing, working on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan for four years. There've been multiple wastewater advisory committees, meetings, they've all been on, filmed by Board Community TV. There've been quarterly Select Board meetings, or Sewer Commissioner meetings, that have been on aboard community TV. You could spend an entire weekend watching all the things that have been talked about in the various committees about the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. There's a lot. Just go look at, look up wastewater advisory committee, and Board of Selectmen, there's a lot of meetings that we've had. So, and it's evolved. I mean, we had a town meeting with 800 people there that said, you know, no outfall in the canal. And so that was a big influence on what happened in terms of the development of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. We are different. We're, I think, the only town on the Cape, except for maybe Brewster, I think, really went, their plan had a lot of septic upgrades in it, and also a golf, I mean, they did things with their golf course and other open space to manage what they needed to do. So it is a living document. It's not the end. We're listening, and I think the conversation is good. So I thank you for coming.
I think the conversation is good, but my concern is that most people are going to say, okay, I've got five years to do this, and they're going to wait for four. And then all of a sudden, you're going to have 1,100 or 1,500 people running out, trying to get the system installed to meet this deadline, because that's what people do. The other side of this is that it's such a complicated issue, I mean, I've learned a great deal since I arrived this evening, that trying to explain this on town meeting floor is going to be very, very difficult. And I think to take what you've just brought up about the big learning point from town meetings several years ago, where 800 people decided they didn't want to dump in the canal, that's a great point, but you don't have to. None of the wastewater treatment plants we have in town right now empty into the canal.
That's true.
So we really don't have to worry about that. And with the advances that have been mentioned earlier, plus the demonstrations that we've already seen, many people don't know that the schools have wastewater treatment plant. Mass Maritime has one, there's one on the base. I mean, this whole is such a-- I mean, this whole, is such a big, complex project. And thus, my question, is this a done deal? We're all going to do IA, and that's the end of it? I mean, I'm still not convinced that that's where we're going, because when we get to town meeting, that's what the document says. And if 25 of us or 100 of us write in and say, we really don't like it that way, does that mean that it's going to change? I don't know.
I don't know either.
Right, right. You know, I'm afraid of the future.
I am too.
Thank you.
Yes, please introduce yourself.
Kevin Doucette, Pecassett. And before I ask my question, I just want to echo Mr. Dwyer's appreciation for the Board's, your collaboration on that, to help us laypeople try to navigate this process on that. And as I understand, and please correct me if I understood it wrong, that, okay, the plan that was submitted to the state, for exception of a couple of pockets of searing, is basically townwide, the universal general use IA systems, regardless of whether a watershed has been identified at this point, or you're the next one to come up when your results come in. So building off of Keith's question, because also gave me some thought, too, okay, how best to try to prepare for this. If a resident who is not yet identified to have the nitrogen issue, but most likely will when the results come in, if they go forward and put in a system at this point, then are they grandfathered with protection from when their area gets identified and the wording of the best available technology comes through? Because, yeah, things can change rapidly and whatnot, but you basically covered on that.
Can you answer that? Because they changed what they originally said. There was some, there was some question about that in the law, and there was, yeah.
If a system is upgraded 10 years, within 10 years of the TMDL being defined, and they included nitrogen-removing technology, whether that's on best available list or not, it is grandfathered in. It is a 10-year window, so...
So if you're a year 11, you'd be out of luck, but if you're a year 10, you're still in. And the area being defined, that's when the actual test result comes in, not when the sample was, say, like, for example, we're waiting a year...
So when the actual TMDL is defined, that's when that timetable starts.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think I'm going to wrap this up. I think we've had a good discussion. Is there any other comments from the board members?
Somebody has their hand raised. Paulette Armstrong, maybe?
Karen Kelly.
Oh, Karen Kelly.
Karen Kelly on Zoom. Do you want to unmute and make a comment?
Yes, please, thank you. Hi, Karen Kelly, 1399, 28A, in Katomet. I've got, I guess I'd like to ask a question, but I think you've already declined answering the question in regards to person sewer in the watershed area that are not going to pass other than Finney's Harbor. And I just, from experience of my parents' home in City of Taun, when they did not have a choice, and sewer was brought down their street, there was a lien put on their home, $20,000 for the installation of the sewer. Now, mind you, that was 15 years ago, so I imagine prices have increased. However, I don't know if your plan is for the Finney Harbor, how that's going to be funded. The assumption would be, it would be the homeowners that were being connected who pay for it, but I can't imagine it costing more than $50,000 to connect to sewer, to move sewer in further down Bourne into Katomet, and I would be more than happy to pay $50,000 to connect to sewer than to put in a system that perhaps in 11 years will not meet the apartments and it would have to be revisited. And that would be something I would hope the Board would consider, please.
Thank you.
Manager, I think there's a Paulette Armstrong also.
I don't know if that's a hand raise, or if that's just her emoji.
That's just her picture.
You know, like, I thought the same thing. I'm like, she looks like the raising hand.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to bring this...
Sorry about the confusion.
Thanks, Paulette.
I just want to bring this to the attention, since we just talked about the betterment issue and the effects it can have on the private property, and I know in the conversations that we had in the joint, a little mini-meeting there with Falmouth to look at that watershed, and whether or not it could be potentially taken off the list with new data, we talked about what Falmouth did under Special Act, which is now a General Act, and Mashpee just accepted this at a previous town meeting, and Bourne might want to look at this. If you are going to run anything that requires a betterment, and what we did is we run most of the system by the town, and then the betterment is a lesser on the burden of the individual taxpayers to be part of that system. In some areas, if you're going to be building your sewer system, some areas, the entire system and the connection goes on the betterment, okay? So those are decisions that you make. Is this a community-wide issue that we're all going to contribute to at some point? Or are just the folks that have to get on it going to have to pay for the plant and the connections, right? But when you accept this Special Act at a municipal level, you can take the bonding, excuse me, the betterment, and put it out over 30 years with no balloon payment at the beginning, and pass on zero interest if you get it, which you're likely to get it, because currently, under regular statutory law with betterments, you have to pass at least 1% on if you get zero. If you get one, you have to pay 2% to the homeowner, right? So this allows that, and then there's some deferral language in the specific proposal that we did in Falmouth, to be able, in certain circumstances, to defer the betterment payment until the sale of the property. And that's how we kept many of the senior citizens living in T-Ticket, my home precinct, down on the peninsula there, that were just barely able to pay the bills today, to be able to keep in their homes, and then it'll have to be settled with the asset when they sell the house or, you know, move on, so to speak. So, but I think it's important to bring that up to Bourne now, because now you're talking about these specifics, which I'm so happy to see, because, you know, it's been, as the town manager mentioned, it's difficult to do both of these things at the same time. And that's why, you know, 2019, when I helped you get the Mass Works grant to do that plant for the $100,000, so you could finish that thing in a couple of years, and we'd be ready to go. But I'm glad that we're here today, and let's keep moving forward, and I'll be here to help you seek the additional funding necessary to go with whatever plans or the final plans. But remember, it is, as you said, a living document, adaptive management. Let's get this thing approved, so that we can then start moving forward with action.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for coming this evening, I appreciate it. It's good to have you here, and, you know, the first of, I think, many conversations.
I think so, it's a very informative, thank you for having us.
Okay. Do you want to adjourn your meeting, and then we'll move on to the rest of the...
Right, motion to adjourn, Board of Health meeting.
Second.
Okay. Margaret.
She left.
Miguel? All right. Aye. The meeting's adjourned.
All right. Thank you all for coming.
And the comments.
And the comments, and the questions.
What happened to the op chance that, you know, this gets implemented, right?
This right here.
These people, you know, they all do it, and then all of a sudden, the numbers...
All right, we have to continue our meeting, so...
Don't do 285, 25-year period.
No, stay. You guys can stay, but they have to kind of, they're having a conversation over there.
To the next year, to the next year.